And some of the council members, which is not a city council function, will be having cookies, cocoa, and crafts at the Fork Senior Center from 1:00 to 3:00. So I just wanted to make that announcement. I hadn't got the flyers out yet, but I did want to make the announcement. I'm sorry, December.
Okay, Councilmember Barnes.
I would like to thank Susan Connor. She's a paramount person in the community. She's always volunteering. She does everything she can to help promote the city of Albion. And I just felt in my heart that she needs to be recognized because she does so much to help our city. She sits in the back. I... Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments this evening? Okay. Seeing as we will move on to public hearing, I'll open it up for the fiscal year 2018 budget. Are there any public comments on the city budget for next year? Please come forward and state your name on the...
Me, I have a presentation.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Was that on the budget? Oh, okay. Is there any public comment on the budget? Okay.
Today is the public hearing for the 2018 budget for the city of Albion, and I want to thank in particular our finance director, Tom Mead. He did an exceptional job in, again, a short period of time to get this completed for us. Just to highlight some of the major changes, we did include funding for over projected three-year period of $3,000 per year in partnership with several other organizations for the continuation of the Albion-Marshall Connector Service. Relative to zoning, $4,000 was allocated as a local match for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's support for our zoning rewrite as part of the Redevelopment Ready Communities, which is the RRC. There was a request to include funding for the repair of the pond at Rieger Park for $17,000, and we were very fortunate to receive a COPS grant for this local policing services. So that's also included in the grant, in the budget that's before you. Relative to positions, there is the creation of a new position, the Deputy Treasurer Clerk, as well as for code enforcement, there are two part-time positions that are being forecast. One would be clerical, the other would be a part-time code enforcement officer. Clerical support for the office of the city manager and the 2% salary increase for essentially the administrative team, the department heads. Also, I want to point out that for the general operating of the city, the military rate will be the 11.9736 mils for the general fund operations. And we are in the third year of the levy of 1.5 mils for the recreation fund, so there will need to be a ballot initiative next year, 2018, for the continuation of funding for recreation, which I want to remind you also provides funding for the Fork Senior Citizens Center. We're in the third year of the levy, a five-year levy for the street improvements, which is at three mils, and there is also a three-mil levy for solid waste. In regards to the general fund, we're projecting total revenues of approximately 3.8 million, expenditures of 4 million, which means we're going into the fund balance approximately 172,000, but that still leaves us with a very healthy fund balance of 1.1 million, which is about 28%, 29%, and the recommended level is generally 15% to 17%, so we still have a healthy fund balance. We are very excited about our ongoing collaborations with a number of other agencies and entities, as was already mentioned, Albion-Marshall Connector. We have a shared service with the city of Marshall for assessing. The Calhoun County Program for Recycling is ongoing, as well as working with the county for the storage of road salts. And we also partnered with them for the Youth Employment Program over this past summer with MDOT. And we're continuing with the City-County Dispatch Service, and we especially want to mention the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority and their work in obtaining a number of grants so that we can do demolitions within our community of derelict properties. On the major streets, total revenues are just over 740,000, total expenditure 697,000, leaving a fund balance increase with the ending fund balance of 503,000 approximately. For the local streets, total revenues are 422,000, expenditures 406,000, also leaving an increase in the fund balance, with the fund balance for local streets of 173,075. Street improvements, and that's the one that has the three-mil levy, which is for five years, and we're in year three, as I previously mentioned, and we're looking at the revenues and expenditures being equal, so there will not be a net impact, and those revenues and expenditures are 268,300. For the sidewalk program, probably the most important thing to notice that the 10-year assessment has ended this year, so the council will need to make a determination as to what you want to do relative to sidewalk improvements, if anything, and how do you want to approach that. So the current projection for next year is actually spending funds that are in the fund balance. For the Recreation Department, there's the 1.5 military rate again that's expiring next year. Total revenues are projected at 160,000 with expenditures almost the same amount, so there's a very tight budget for the Recreation Fund, which is, the Recreation Center is operating out of the Marshall Opportunity High School, so we're calling that our Recreation Center. For solid waste, total revenues are approximately 121,000, expenditures 210,000, so again increasing the fund balance slightly, leaving a fund balance of 166,000. The sewer funds, total revenues are approximately 1.1 million with expenditures of 1.4 million. That's having a fund balance impact of a negative 335,000, leaving a ending fund balance of 3.8 million. And as you recall, we are completing the SAW grant program, so we'll get an assessment relative to the capital improvements for the SAW grant and our sewer funds and determination of what capital improvements are needed and the funding level that's necessary in order to make sure that our infrastructure is properly operating and upgrading. For the sewer fund, total revenues are 918,000, expenditures of just over 1 million, and again going into the fund balance approximately 92,000, ending a fund with a fund balance of 5.2 million. So that's a very high-level presentation of your major funds. For the debt service, the GO bonds are paid off, so the debt service funds, which also includes the ABA bonds, the DPW Building Department and Energy Bonds, that has expenditures of 326,000. The Equipment Fund has an expenditure of 312,000, and the EDC, which you just recently had the discussion in regards to their units, which includes the Business Incubator, TIFA or Tax Increment Finance Authority, the revolving loan fund, and the DDA, which are all included in your other fund categories, have an expenditure of approximately 1 million. And that's the highlight of your funds, and for a total of all funds, that revenue amount is 11.2 million with expenditures of approximately 12 million.
Any questions from council? Councilmember French.
Thank you. I don't know if Manager Mitchell, whether or not you can answer this question, or maybe Jim or Tom. 5.2 million in the water fund balance, are we going to be able to tap that for the water tower improvements that we're looking at? Or, I mean, is the percentage of our operating about the same for water fund, like around 20% is what we want in our fund balance year to year? And how does that compare to this?
We're working with the engineer, Mickey Bitner, in particular, in order to get some quotes relative to the water tower retrofit and the additional tower, as well as the system improvements. So once we get a complete package with the total cost, we can determine between the special appropriation that you see from the state and our existing fund balance or bonding, what's the best venue in terms of making these things happen.
Right. So a combination of the two might be an appropriate mode of action?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further comments from council? Okay. So I've closed the public hearing. We will move on now to... Oh, and I will say one thing about that before I move on. Copies of the budget, I'm sure they'll be available online and in the library, right? Okay. So, yeah, copies of the budget will be available on the city website, and then also I know there'll be a hard copy, hard copies at the public library and here at City Hall. We'll move on to public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes and to agenda items only. Please observe proper decorum. State your name and your address. Thank you.
Nidia Wolf, 409 Irwin Ave. Councilmembers, I stand before you representing the Albion Community Leadership and Engagement Council. We are in support of the Albion City Council adding an addendum to the city manager, Dr. Cheryl Mitchell's contract to increase her salary. We understand that this may be done during a closed session between the Albion City Council and city manager. We ask that you approve that.
And just a further note from the clerk, there's a sign-in sheet on the podium, so please sign that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Becky Decker. I live at 601 Baroque Street. I wanted to say good evening to the mayor and the council. I am concerned about several issues, primarily that it appears that the city council is being asked to vote on a resolution that the contents provide no specific amount of the proposed increase or the length of the proposed extension of contract. This is not normal. This is not the best practice, in my opinion. These details are usually negotiated before an actual resolution is brought before council so that our elected officials have the opportunity to do their due diligence, their research, and speak to their constituents. Excuse me. I also would suggest that they compare the proposed increase in compensation to similar cities by considering the projected financial status of the city and by reviewing what other parts of the manager's contract could be improved. Mayor Brown's comments during the last meeting of November 27th indicate that there's been no due diligence to this point has been taken. The manager, excuse me, seems to be fine with the proposal of a nearly 13% raise while department heads would only get a 4% raise and the city workers only receive a 2% raise. And so in consideration of this resolution is not only out of order, but is a symptom of a larger problem, in my opinion, that it only became clearer and clearer over the last two months. The manager's unsolicited resignation, her accusations of harassment, the staged outcry from a segment of the community threatened to undermine the underlying role the city council is supposed to play in our local government, providing accountability and oversight for this policy and budget. Like others, I appreciate the manager's work. However, the council which we elect cannot be held hostage because the manager wants to make more money and to possibly have a contract that extends beyond the terms of the current city council. What is being asked for tonight should be negotiated in a study session and not sprung onto an agenda with no details. This process, in my opinion, is manipulative and dysfunctional. It is not within the city coun... Excuse me, it's not with the city council, but with the city manager who does not respect the role of our elected officials to properly consider the use of our taxpayers' money. Thank you all very much.
Good evening. My name is Levada Weeks. I live at 917 Luther Drive. I came to Albion in 1954, so I've probably been a part of this city for more years than you've been alive. I have seen a lot of city managers, mayors, and councilpersons come and go. I have never had the privilege of watching a city manager do more for our city in three short years than Cheryl Mitchell. She has brought more money to this city in her short period than anyone else or multiple managers put together. She goes to every event that the city has, and she goes with a smile because she's Albion. Cheryl is a gem that can never, never be replaced, and we cannot afford to be without. Cheryl has more knowledge in government in her little finger than most of you will ever have. Yet most of you councilmembers want to stop her at every turn. She is making you look good, but you obviously do not understand that. She is working for our city while most of you councilpersons are trying to make a mark for yourself. That is not why you were voted into office. Cheryl has more than already earned the raise that was proposed to the last council meeting but rejected. You fail to understand awarding her this raise now in the middle of her contract would give us not only the rest of this contract, but probably two more years with Cheryl at the helm. Would also show her that we believe in her and we want her to stay here in Albion. I hope you reconsider why you were in office and worked together for the betterment of our city. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Decker, 601 Baroque Street. I'd like to start. I have some questions, and I don't know if this is... They'll be answered today, but I would like some information on when they might be. In looking at the budget and in hearing about the water tower and the finances, I can't help but wonder how we can justify a 12% raise for a single employee when our citizenry is being incre... I think it's a third increase in our water bills. We've got four new positions that were just created, and yet we're being told the city can't afford to provide basic functions and that those costs are having to be offset by our citizens. So I personally am a little concerned that there's been no research, no closed sessions, no... Everything that my mom said, essentially. However, there's no transparency here on what you've done to earn 12% of an increase. Like, that's a raise that's unheard of as far as city governments go, and I appreciate, as the lady who just sat down, any efforts that you've made on behalf of our city, but I can't help in light of your recent threat to quit, that this kind of feels like blackmail a little bit. So I just, I'm curious as to some kind of explanation as to what you feel your contribution is to warrant a raise of that extent and where the funding for that is going to come in light of us not having funding for things like the water tower and road repairs and things of that nature. So, thank you.
You have to sign first before I... Signing in, right? I wish we could somebody give you some time to... Okay, Wayne Arnold, 906 Hall Street. For the last year, since this new council been sworn in, many times it was just myself and the recorder lady here, and, I mean, really, really. And glad to see we got a good shot, but my point is this. I monitor, I monitor the city council, and when we had the first special meeting, I was like, the next day I was down to Ms. Mitchell's office and asking her please not to resign because she, it is a need for her, and I think it's a consensus that we need her. It really is. But, on the other hand, when Ms. Mitchell's contract was approved last, whatever it was last year, I thought, I thought everybody was happy about it. I don't know how much Ms. Mitchell may... And you know what? She may deserve every penny she got, but, but here's the thing. I think, I think we probably should probably wait, you know what I'm saying, Ms. Mitchell? Because what I'm saying is, if you go to whatever, if that 12,000 is going to be added to your salary, I think you should get it. I really do. And, and like I say, I think that we probably should just wait and negotiate it so you can get just what you deserve, but for, at this particular time, for, for us to just... I heard somebody say, "Well, we got so much money left that we can afford it." Well, if we got so much money, I think we probably could use that to help some senior citizens with their property taxes. And then, yes, give Ms. Mitchell what she deserves when it's time for her contract to come up, but right now probably wouldn't, wouldn't be a good time. And like I said, the young council have made some decisions that's probably contrary to what I believe, but as far as the smarts and as far as them, you know, at this point, I think they probably made the right decision. And I got to say, I don't think it's going to hurt to just wait, and whatever Ms. Mitchell deserved, by all means, I think she should get because we do need her here, but at this time, just, you know, let's just wait for a few more months and then give her what she, give her what she deserves. And thank you.
Mike Bearman, 1101 629 Mile Road. And I've been here, I've been sitting beside you too at most of these meetings no one else has been at. But anyway, yeah. But anyway, I've learned over the years that when you have a contracted employee, as Cheryl is, you normally start reopening their contract a year early because it takes somebody about a year to find a new job if they have to. That wasn't done in August, like should have been done to start with. After, if, in the last year of your contract, you start looking for a new job. The last six months, if it's appropriate by the people that are hiring her or taking care of things like this council is, the last six months, you should tell her that she's not welcome and that she shouldn't get the contract if that's what you're going to do, because that definitely gives her a chance to look someplace else. But not to reopen her contract... Don't look like that at me, Sonya.
I'm not looking at you.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, I was.
Point of order. Just please continue with your comments. Don't make reference to the council.
Well, then have them not make comments with their facial features. But anyway.
I was not looking at...
As we're going...
One second. Okay, continue.
Okay. But going on with this, if you want to carry on, you normally contract, give a year extension, two-year extension every year. That way they know they've got a job at the end of their year when they're working. Her contract comes due August 1st, right? I, in August sometime, but I do know that if you wait until August and don't renew her contract, then she's out without a job, without any way of making money and that, and I wouldn't want to wish that upon anybody. And that's not right. Thank you.
So any further public comment this evening?
Hello, my name is Marva Powell. My address is 116 West Pine Street, Albion, Michigan. First of all, I'd like to say to Dr. Mitchell, I'm, I'm really sorry for everything that you have gone through with the council and everything, and I think this should have and could have been avoided. And first of all, and I want to say to the mayor and all the councilmembers, you are elected officials, so if at some point when the public feels that you're not representing what, what we want, you can be recalled. And I know it's with different individuals and different personalities and stuff, sometimes hard to get along and stuff, but you're supposed to be representing us. And I like to say to my councilperson, Mrs. Reed, thank you for representing me the way I want to be represented. And to all the other councilmembers, if you haven't talked to the people in your precincts, you need to talk to the people in your precincts and find out how they feel about this. I, I think a raise for Dr. Mitchell is in order. I'm not saying the 12%, but actually most of the time that's a negotiating figure, and, and it usually goes down, so you don't start with 2% and then go down to 1%. You get my point? Okay. So, and personally speaking, I was born and raised in Albion, and like I always come up here and say, "I love Albion, and I'm going to be here for the rest of my life." I want to see this city grow and become a, a, a city that people want to move to and companies and stuff like it was when I was growing up in the 50s and 60s. Now, we might not ever get back to the way that was because we had a lot of factories and foundries and everybody had a job and things were better, and a lot of that stuff has gone away, but we are getting other businesses here and with the help of the college and the other, other businesses in Albion and stuff. I want to see our city come back up to the way it was, and this has always been a city where people loved each other and they worked together for one common goal, and I want to see that. And I, I'm just not seeing it with the council. So, you know, okay.
Ms. Powell.
Oh, is my three minutes up?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Is there any further...
My name is Alfreda Dyssart Drake and I do reside at 1016 South Superior Street. And I was talking to a young person not too long ago. And I don't know if the young person watched city council meetings or whatever. But they said, you know, Mrs. Drake, there are some adult bullies. Adult bullies. And since I've been attending the city council's meetings as of lately especially, I guess I've really seen that, adult bullies. And it's so interesting because we talk about working together. And I think I said a few Mondays ago, that it means that it's not an eye show. It takes everybody from the mayor, city manager, city clerk, all those who've been elected, the people in the community to work together. And we are going to have differences of opinion. When I first left the University of Michigan and came here, I worked for a radio station. I was in broadcasting for quite a while. And just where Catherine sits right here, I sit there for many, many years. I've seen many a mayor, many a city councilperson and city manager. And I mean, I've seen some things happen in here. And you think, well, I guess, oh, this is not a good situation. I've seen something a little bit different than this over the years. For the last, I can't recall how many times, how long I was there. But it was a long time and I was here. And so, you know, these individuals come and yes, they may be elected. But it really is a thankless position. And to get up a name call, I think it would should be a little bit better than as the city of Albion. We talk about city of Albion and how great it is. I think the name calling should stop. It should stop. Because if not, you've been an adult bully. If your children were in school and someone was doing this to your child, you'd be ready to do all you could to protect your child. So adult bullying is just as worse as when children are in school and they're bullying someone else. And that needs to stop. We're all intelligent, we come here, we need to be professional. And yes, I'm speaking because I do have an opinion and I'm expressing my opinion. Mrs. Reed, you are a teacher, retired teacher. And you know what that looks like, a bullying in the school system.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Barnes.
Okay, can you...
Excuse me, Mayor Brown. Okay? So adult bullying, adult bullying needs to stop. It needs to stop. Adult bullying needs to stop, I'm expressing myself.
That's a good point. So it's, can you... Is it targeted to an agenda item?
Pardon me?
Are your comments targeted to an agenda item?
Yes, it is. Because they've come up here talking about such a city manager and her getting the raise and what have you. And again, I guess I have to express what I need to express regarding what someone else said. I think at due time, she'll get the raise she needs.
I want to, I have a right to appeal.
Okay.
What's your ruling on my point of order? She's not addressing, with all due respect...
Yeah, no.
...the agenda item.
I do apologize. But when the evidence have gotten up here...
One second, one second. So I asked and she pointed out she's referring to the agenda item for the manager compensation?
Because what's happened, people have come up here and... People have come up here and that's what they've done, they have bullied and name called. And the agenda item has to do with her raise. Not calling names, I will sit down, thank you.
For three minutes, thank you.
I have no problem, I respect that. Adult bullies, okay.
Thank you. Are there any other...
One more.
Okay.
Brenda Davis, 1229 Highland Avenue. And I have talked to, and this is referenced for the raise. And I've talked to some city employees. And they were concerned that they have gone so long without a raise. And I'm surprised they're not here. And my councilwoman, Sonya, you do a good job representing our area. I voted you in and I'm proud of you. And so I suggest that everybody take in consideration the whole picture. Everybody does a good job. Y'all don't have to sit up here and always argue. And you want people to move here, y'all can't even get along. Now, who going to come to Albion and everybody fighting? Y'all, it's wrong.
Is there any further public comment on the agenda this evening?
Hello, council, mayor, city manager. 1203 Second Street, Albion, Michigan. I am here today to speak about some subjects that have been going on since before 2014.
Is it, just one second. Is it about, is it about a particular agenda item?
Yes, a particular agenda item.
Okay, okay.
I'm getting to the point.
Okay.
Okay. Albion is supposed to clean up street debris. There is street debris all over Albion. Albion makes us clean up our leaves and make us dispose of them.
So, that's not on the agenda?
Well, it's okay about the agenda, okay.
Yeah, so...
But don't you want to hear from taxpayers? Don't you want to hear about where their money's going?
Yeah, I appreciate it. But the appropriate time to comment about non-agenda items is at the end of the, at the second public comment.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm not, I'm just trying to follow.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, I'll wait then.
Are there any further public comments on the agenda? Seeing now, we will move on to consent calendar approval of various minutes noted in the agenda. And then also authorization for the employee holiday party. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. Items for individual discussion, item A, request approval for the reappointment. And I guess initial appointment of the following individuals. Albert Smith, initial appointment to the zoning board of appeals. Francis Valdez, initial appointment planning commission. Eric Lang to the Albion Trust. Shawn Wilson to the Economic Development Corporation. And George Strander, reappointment to the planning commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at discussion, Councilman Barnes.
I would ask that we take them individually because I have some other candidates that were not selected for nomination. And I want to share some discussion concerning those candidates. I wouldn't want to take them all in, one of them up some because the trust, EDC, and the planning commission are paramount in our progression and moving out and forward. And I think we should discuss the applicants.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So... We have a motion on the floor, are you willing to withdraw the motion? Councilman Barnes.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, who made the motion?
Oh, I made it.
Oh, you did. Would you be willing to withdraw that if there's...
Sure.
Okay, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Okay. And we'll do these individually. So for Mr. Albert Smith to the ZBA, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Francis Valdez to the planning commission, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Councilman Barnes.
Yes, Mr. Mark Allen Lilly also put in for the planning commission. And his background is with WK Kellogg Foundation right here in our area. He's also worked with planning and development through Kellogg. And he's a resident of our city. And he's a regular fixture here at city hall and at city council meetings. He turned his application in, you know, I think with November 8th at some time. He also, I believe, tried to contact you by phone or some media such as that. And he's a great candidate and with ties to a wonderful foundation that gives billions of dollars in our area. I would think that he would be very, very valuable on the planning.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Brown, Councilman Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say in support of Ms. Valdez that she was a former Albion city council member. So she has experience on council. In a conversation with her, I also learned that she used to serve on planning commission years ago. So I think her experience, she's a former teacher, retired, actually one of my former teachers. So she has a very extensive background. She's very capable and she's very qualified to serve on planning. So I just wanted to say that in support of her application, thank you.
Councilman Reed.
I agree with Mr. Barnes and I talked to Mr. Lilly also. And he was saying that he had not heard anything after he turned in his application. I've worked with Mark on several other committees, including Habitat for Humanity. And he's very capable, I think, of handling this position also.
Thank you. Councilman French.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I share both Councilwoman Brown's comments regarding Ms. Valdez's qualifications, which is why I endorsed and raised that motion to appoint her to the planning commission. With regard to Mark Lilly, I would much rather see him in a different position that we're going to be talking about later. And so I would, I would say that he also applied to serve on the Economic Development Corporation. And so when we get to Mr. Wilson's appointment, that we bring Mark Lilly back to that. But I would endorse Ruth Valdez's appointment to the planning commission. Again, citing Councilwoman Brown's listing of experiences and the fact that she's served in that capacity already.
Councilman Barnes.
I definitely can accept Ms. Valdez in that position. My concern was also the trust, as it will come in this discussion with Mr. Lilly. And I just wanted his name to be recognized as a valuable candidate. I can yield and support Ms. Valdez.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Eric Lang, initial appointment to the Albion Trust, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved in second discussion. Councilman French.
Thank you, Mayor. I have known Rick now for a number of years. And given his experience in working for companies like Arthur Andersen and Plant Moran, I think he brings a valuable auditing experience to that board. And so I would fully endorse him to be in that position.
Is there any further discussion?
I was going to say this later, so I'll do it now. But one of the things that, I guess for the public's understanding, so under our current charter, the mayor appoints or makes nominations and the council ratifies that or not for all city boards except, I think, the housing commission. And what, each board is different. There are some boards that have particular requirements. For example, planning commission is nine members. And they, all but one have to be residents of the city. So the various boards have different requirements. DDA has a requirement for, for, I guess, a certain number of directors to actually own businesses or be residents of the downtown development district. So what I do in making appointments is I try to make sure that the expertise of the applicants is relevant to that board. And then I try to look and see if there's a distribution among the precincts. And so there are a number of factors that go into that decision. So that's a general comment that's relative to all the appointments this evening.
Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote on Mr. Lang's appointment.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed? And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Shawn Wilson to the Economic Development Corporation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second discussion. Councilman Barnes.
Again, I would like to bring up Mr. Lilly. Resident of Albion, WK Kellogg. Panic experience, dealing with millions of dollars in the business area. Regular fixture at our meetings. My concern also is that Mr. Wilson, I believe is from the Detroit area. I'm more than, I'm more than 90 miles away, I think, I'm looking here. I think that we, at this point, would be more served in using qualified Albionites to show our citizens that, you know, we back them and we support them and they pay taxes in our cities. And economic development is a crucial part of our network and attracting business, capturing our taxes. And I believe he's an excellent candidate and right here for my time.
Councilmember French, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like a comment from you as to who Mr. Wilson is and how you found him to put him on our EDC board. Yes, he applied, but I can't imagine a person who lives in Rose Point Farms would apply for an EDC position unless someone talked to him about the possibility. I don't, I don't oppose his appointment or not. But I just like to know what the rationale was for...
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So Shawn Wilson, I know personally because he is an Albionite. Born and raised here, graduated from Albion High School, has gone on to do tremendous things. He currently works in public relations and public affairs. He, like many others who have moved away, still has a heart here and a passion here for Albion. So he has been paying attention to what's going on here in our community, his community, that produced him. Mr. Wilson has deep roots here. He's very connected to community here. And again, he's just another example of what Albion has produced as far as professional. So, thank you.
So to provide a little further clarification, so the mayor is ex-official, a member of the EDC. And I also sat on the steering committee for the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And so there were seven key factors and the members of that committee were asked to rank them. And one of the comments that Dr. Ditzler made, he was also on that steering committee, was a recommendation to really put marketing and publicity about the positive things that are happening in the city at the forefront. That was like his number one of the seven strategic goals to really promote. You know, to really find a way to get a quality narrative out in the media about what's going on in Albion. And, you know, I talk to people all the time, happen to talk to Mr. Wilson. As Councilman Brown said, he's a native of Albion. The actual bench outside of city hall is dedicated to his mother, Blanche Wilson. He works, he runs the Detroit office of Truscott-Rawston, which is probably the most prominent public relations firm in the state of Michigan. And has a concern for Albion. And also sits on the Governor Snyder appointed into the Michigan Strategic Fund that's connected to the MEDC. So I couldn't think of a better candidate who I was actually surprised would be interested in giving back to Albion. So I had no problem making that appointment, so. Great, thank you. Councilman Barnes.
Well, I'm still concerned about geographics and availability. And does the board or the EDC director have any discussion that these were the candidates? Not that they make the decision, but we, in the prior appointment of Harvey's name? Barry Harvey from Ypsilanti somewhere? We talked about a fit and we felt that he was the fit. Was that a consensus with them? Was that a consensus with them that some of these candidates are the fit that they need to handle certain categorized items that you're mentioning?
Well...
Mayor.
Granted, okay. As I stated, I sit on the board and I sit on the board for the strategic planning for the committee for that. So I'm aware of the discussions of that. And I will say, when I was talking about earlier about residency, a majority of the board was already non-residents. So we had members who were living in Marshall, Eden Rapids, the townships. So, you know, I think that sometimes expertise is worth that and the bylaws allow some flexibility with that too as well, so, yeah.
With all due respect, that wasn't my question, but thank you.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Corporation does not meet every day. So Mr. Wilson hasn't even officially been appointed yet, so the distance isn't even an issue at this time, with all due respect. Thank you.
Is there any other? Councilmember French.
Thank you. I really see this as a win-win. We have two excellent candidates. Mark Lelli is an excellent candidate, could serve, would take meetings, obviously expertise and a history of growing up in Albion for Mr. Wilson, an equally strong candidate. I would just urge that when we appoint Mr. Wilson, and I think there's probably votes for that, that we would really try to make sure that he could be present at the meetings. I know that, Mayor, no disrespect intended, that when you were working elsewhere, your attendance at meetings by phone is less than optimal. And so I think that we would hope that the board would work very hard with Mr. Wilson to find an appropriate way for him to be in attendance that's not just over the phone, so.
Thank you.
But I thank you, sorry, just to finish, I thank you for finding the expertise that was outlined in the strat planning, so, well done.
Is there any further comment from council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. George Strander, reappointment to the Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Strander is currently the Chair of the Planning Commission, so, and he's also an attorney. So wanted to keep his experience and history on the Planning Commission. Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Request approval resolution 2017-48, file adoption of the future land use and zoning plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We will have discussion. I'll ask the manager to just provide a brief summary.
Okay, Mayor and Council, if you recall, this has been the document that's been before you for approximately two months, as well as the Planning Commission, relative to the restructuring of our zoning ordinances, relative to the use of future land use. So I don't believe we've had much public comment in regards to this document. So the document, as was presented by the Planning Commission, is before you for adoption.
Is there any further comment from council? Seeing none, we will move on. I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Discussion ordinance 2018, well, yeah, I guess it's going to be a future ordinance. Future, Resolution 2018-01, medical marijuana ordinance. Do you want to...
Sure. So here was my thinking on what to do tonight. Because there's a lot here. Basically, we're creating a new article, Chapter 22, that encompasses 14 ordinances. What I want to do is just kind of give you a brief overview of each section, kind of highlight for the council the areas that I need some input from council on and things of that nature. And then I guess just let the discussion go from there. So as an initial matter, most of this ordinance is an adaptation of Leonie Township's ordinance in that we've modified it since they were here to throw in theirs to apply to the city. The first one, Section 200, just gives basically a kind of legislative intent, purpose statement as to why the city is pursuing the ordinances. I won't go into any more detail there. Section 201 defines several portion, terms that are referred to throughout the ordinance and makes reference back to both federal and state statute. And essentially it just provides definitions of various terms that are identified throughout the ordinance. Section 203 references the types of facilities that are going to be authorized within the cities and refers to the annual fees. I'm going to circle back to this one, but essentially what you've got there is the grower facilities, processor, secure transporters and safety compliance facilities. And as part of the discussion tonight, where I'm looking feedback for council for is exactly how many of those particular facilities you want to have in the city. Another thing that I'm going to insert when we come back, when we come back with the finalized draft for actual adoption is I need to know, and this is going to be part council and part administration, and we can, we need to set this by resolution, what the non-refundable application fee is going to be and what the annual license fee is going to be. The application fee should be a reflection of the costs that are incurred by the staff in having to investigate the various applications for available background checks conducted by the public safety, the planning department's time spent checking to see if a particular facility is, has appropriate distances from whatever council determines, you know, for example, that it's a certain distance away from schools and things of that nature. The license fee, if you recall, under, it can be up to $5,000. Now, what I had expressed to the manager and I think I brought it up with council is we have to rationally relate that number to something. We can't just arbitrarily say, well, we're going to charge $5,000 a year. I can tell you that other municipalities have done that and they're currently being sued because they can't justify why they're charging that number. So we have to be able to say, we're charging this amount for the annual license for this reason. And that's a discussion we're going to have to have with council at some...
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Brown.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. So could you give examples of those justifiable reasons?
Like, for example, the, both the state statute and our ordinance would, for example, allow public safety to perform periodic inspections of the various facilities. So, for example, that maybe extra, extra costs in manpower and having public safety go out and having to inspect the facilities, that would be a way to justify part of that fee. But that's just an example. So moving along to Section 204, one thing that I did want to address with council that I put in my notes here in subsection A of 204. Leonie's ordinance and some of the other ordinances provide for this automatic renewal period. I guess from a legal standpoint, I'm not a fan of annual renewal, not just in licenses, but in contracts and things of that nature. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any other licenses that we issue in the city that are automatic renewal. Usually they, at the expiration of their term, they always come back to council for review and whether that, you know, be little things or big things, I, so that's something I'd like some direction on.
Councilmember French.
Thank you.
Colin, what section are you in?
I'm looking at 204, so A. And if you look, if you look about the middle way down, upon the expiration of an existing license, a license will be automatically renewed.
Oh, yeah, I see. Thank you.
You know, like, my preference and my suggestion would be that we not have automatic renewal that put it in there because other municipalities have done that. But like I said, we don't have any other licenses in the city, I don't believe, that we do automatic renewal on. And I don't know that we want to break with that precedent or start a new precedent.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Harkness, I hate to go back. You gave an example of justifiable reasons for the application fee.
Yeah.
But you gave one that I knew. I knew the police was one, but I don't, is there another one you can think of right off the top of your head or no?
I would say another one that I can think of is if, if there was some issue with, for example, a facility having a state license issued that then affected its city license that we had to look into, whether it was my office having to look into it or the manager's office. If they were improperly, say, for example, maybe one of the manufacturing facilities were improperly disposing of some of their refuse, maybe they just dumped extra marijuana out in regular trash and, you know, something like that. You know, a conversation that I had with our Public Services Director is, you know, a lot of, a lot of facilities that grow plants, not just marijuana facilities, but for example, greenhouses and things like that, use a lot of pesticides. And my question to Jim was, what are these large corporations, how do they dispose of those chemicals? You know, I can't imagine they just put them down in sewer drains. So what if, you know, how do we, how do we deal with making sure that they're taking care of their regulated chemicals? And maybe we say, okay, part of this fee is to make sure that they have everything labeled correctly, that they're disposing of their hazardous chemicals correctly, things like that.
Thank you.
No problem. Yes.
I had a question, it's jumping right back. And this is, this is actually a question that came up in Planning Commission and I believe the chief mentioned it, but it's early on. Let me see what section it's...
Are you still in 204?
No, I'm on the second page of the whole thing. Enclosed lock facility.
Wait, what?
The second page and the last paragraph of the bottom.
Okay.
So this is talking about having grow, growing, going on outside and not inside a facility. So is that something that we want to keep? Because they're saying enclosed is just, it's gated off.
Well, not visible, so.
Yeah.
Solid fence.
That's totally up to you.
Okay, because my, my understanding is, well, what I was envisioning was, you know, everything in an actual enclosed discreet building. So I would prefer if we, if we could remove that, I don't know if we need to...
Only indoors.
Yeah.
That is not, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah.
That is, that's something we can change. Is that it?
Yeah, that was mine.
Okay. I'm just going to keep, yes.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. Article 22 of Section B.
Yes.
I'm reading that to say that whoever is going to have such a facility has to have a quarter million dollars in cash on hand, is that...
Yes, and I'll tell you, that was something that municipalities were starting to do and actually licensing regulatory affairs just, I just got an email today that they issued their emergency regulations on that where they have indicated they have to have a certain amount of cash liquidity to operate these facilities. And so the quarter million dollar figure is what is being used.
So small business operation, this is not?
That is kind of the grievance that's going around, but that is how the, it's kind of being led from the top down.
I can certainly see them being able to get that money after they have started their operation.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the rest of Section 204 basically outlines the application process. It indicates, you know, things, we get the obvious information, you know, names, dates of birth, where it's going to be located. We need to have verification that they have authorization from the state to operate their facility that every stakeholder who's a, you know, a person that basically owns the business does not have any criminal offense, felony controlled substance offenses and things like that. Obviously, you don't want somebody operating a, you know, marijuana, you know, transporting services if they've got convictions for delivery, manufacturing, things like that. As we do background checks as part of the process, they provide proof that they've got adequate insurance on the facility. And with the city named as an additional insured, so if something goes wrong, the city can't be held liable for, or to the extent that people seek liability against the city if it's covered by an insurance policy. There is, needs to be security plans, making sure that, you know, the facility is locked. Chief Kip actually made an excellent point about having, having lights around all the facility, all the way around the facilities, which I'm happy to add, making it more easy for the public safety department to patrol the area and less opportunity for crime to occur.
One question that came up, I know in the work session and then it came up during Planning Commission is about the distance from different...
I'm getting to that. It's coming up. I'm sorry. As Councilman French mentioned, there's a verification that anyone seeking to operate the medical marijuana facility has to demonstrate at least $250,000 in immediate liquid available funds. And that is, from my understanding and the way that that's being led from the top down, that, that's essentially to ensure that what's going to happen is you're going to have viable businesses that are going to be operating in the city and they're going to have the resources to comply with the state regulations, the local regulations. And I think that's ultimately for the protection of both the city and the public. There's a couple other little provisions in there. I won't go through all of them. Essentially, the process is going to be, once, once an application is received and the clerk confirms that they have what they need to have, it's referred to the city attorney, the chief of public safety, the director of planning and the finance director. And each one of those departments is going to verify that they've met all the application requirements. For example, the easiest example would be the planning department to make sure that they're going to put a facility that complies with all the distance requirements, like not putting a, you know, a grow operation right next to an elementary school or something like that. License, Section 205, application evaluation. So both the city council and the Planning Commission are going to assess all the applications essentially. Initially, they go to the Planning Commission with their recommendation for council and then council takes that recommendation from the Planning Commission and does their own evaluation of the information. You look at, and you can see it's outlined in Section 205, experience operating businesses, business reputation, moral character, financial ability of the business, whether or not an applicant has any prior convictions for gambling, weapons, tax evasion, things like that. And then essentially, the city council looks at each application and determines out of all those criteria, who's most qualified and meets the most categories. The rest of it, again, just goes through the details of how we evaluate and the timeframe for evaluation. Section 206, licenses, just indicates how the licenses are confidential. Licenses can transfer licenses to different locations after the clerk has okayed that. And it's referred again to the same group, the public safety, planning director and city council. Since the council did not approve provisioning centers, 2207 expressly provides that provisioning centers are prohibited at this time from operating in the city. If that is something that the city wants to change in the future, that is an easy change that we can make. But I just wanted to, we have it spelled out right there. As far as, there is a section regarding minimum, minimum standards for a growing facility. As you can see, it has provisions, like it has to be contained in an enclosed lock facility and that's something that we'll discuss that the mayor just brought up. They have to have all their necessary... They have to have all their necessary, like, just like any other business, they have to have building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical permits. Anything where they're storing chemicals has to be stored in compliance with the fire code and things like that. They can't have litter and waste, you know, just littering around their property. They can't leave marijuana in exposed areas. The building has to be in good repair. Everything has to be sanitary. Odor control is a big one. Essentially, what this boils down to is it, it essentially, I mean, it, it's spelled out over the course of about, almost, but basically what it boils down to is, is that the buildings for these facilities need to be kept under negative pressure, which means air only flows into the building, not out, so that none of the surrounding businesses or area, or not just businesses, but the surrounding areas, won't have that, what I'll refer to as a funky marijuana odor throughout the neighborhood. Well, you won't get that stinky smell because it's under negative pressure. Things like that. Two two, excuse me, two oh nine provides minimal operational standards for safety compliance facilities. And I should note, I did mention this on the last one, consumption and use of marijuana is prohibited at all these facilities, so you can't use them, use it at the facility. All of these facilities are open to inspection by the state and the state police. State, they have to maintain safety compliance logs. Everything has to be hygienic. These facilities cannot have any signing, signage or advertising, advertising them as, as the particular facility, so you won't see something bright marquee light saying marijuana facility here. The statute was specifically designed so that these facilities don't draw attention because, you know, as, as I've noted in the previous meetings, these types of facilities tend to be a target for violent crime, and I think the thought behind not having, you know, a sign with a big arrow saying marijuana and cash stored here is the idea to avoid, avoid those, those insurgent crime. Two ten is operational standards for processor facilities. I won't go through all those, but it just, it basically hits all the same things. Everything has to be indoors, has to comply with all the state laws, lock facilities, building permits, mechanical permits, all those things. Everything has to be clean and good repaired, no exterior signage identifying it, odor control. Two eleven, operational standards for a secure transporter. That is slightly shorter because what we're dealing with there is actually somebody that's probably going to be going in between municipalities. So there's only a certain amount that we can regulate within the city. But we've included things, for example, they have to have a valid chauffeur's license, it has to be a two-person crew, with at least one individual staying with the vehicle at all times. That's to reduce the opportunity for crimes to be committed. Also cannot bear any markings saying this is a marijuana transportation vehicle. Section two twelve, which is what the mayor was referring to earlier, indicates that no grow facility, any of the facilities actually can be located within one thousand feet of any public or private elementary, licensed childcare facility, vocational or secondary school. I went with a thousand feet because that was, I believe, the sense that we got from the last meeting we had on marijuana. That is what most municipalities do as it relates to educational facilities. My question to council is actually twofold, and when we get into discussion, you know, I welcome any feedback in that regard. A, is the council good with that distance? And B, at the previous council meeting, the council had also expressed an interest in possibly limiting distances from parks and possibly places of worship. And so whether or not the council wants to include those is some direction that I will need. Section B of that section, if you recall, the council already went through and limited these facilities to certain zoning districts. Those are all included in subsection B. Section two thirteen, denial and revocation, basically indicates on what, on what reasons a license can be denied and under what, for what reasons it can be revoked. For example, if somebody violates one of these ordinances, if, if they're convicted for a controlled substance violation, if there's any kind of false statement made in their application, if they are basically doing business in a, in a non-professional manner as it relates to their handling of medical marijuana, that can even be a reason to have it revoked. If their business becomes a public nuisance, I'd use the example, you know, leaving marijuana in easily accessible area, and maybe public safety has to make frequent visits there, that can be a public nuisance. Or of course, if the state licensing board has revoked their license or denied it, then that would be an obvious basis for us to revoke their license. As far as penalties, any person in violation of, of the, any one of the ordinances hearing is a misdemeanor punishable by up to ninety days of imprisonment and five hundred dollars in fines plus prosecution. The, that is just our local version of the penalty. There's nothing in there that prevents our public safety department from enforcing this at the state level, which may have more, more punitive.
Thank you.
Penalties. The, if, for some reason, the, there's a concern over public safety or welfare that requires emergency action where we can't have a hearing, the city clerk is empowered to temporarily suspend a marijuana facility license and then, and then that would need to come for, for a hearing in front of the council.
Okay, Councilman French.
Just a real quick question, we've given the authority to the clerk.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too. Is that a, is that a statute thing?
Well.
Instead of, say, public safety or?
Manager.
Typically, the way, the way that it typically works in, in most licenses, the reason that, that I think most municipalities have, have delegated that to the clerk is because technically the license is emanating from the clerk's office. And so while they're ultimately approved by the council, the clerk is typically the one that issues the actual license. So if, for example, the public safety department goes to the clerk and says, there's a problem here, this license needs to be temporarily suspended, she would be the one that does that, whether it be on the recommendation of the public safety department or my office or, or the planning department because of some other violation. And then it would come before council for a hearing as to whether or not that license should be revoked for, for a more permanent period of time. So that's just an interim action for an emergency.
Okay.
Thank you. And so that is fourteen ordinances for our new article five of chapter twenty-two.
So one, one comment or question, so I know, reference to planning commission, there was discussion about, two, two issues. One is a, a sense of how we're going to handle the dance between council and planning commission to get this implemented. So a sense of that. And then the other is a question about, I recall we had considered, we didn't, I don't think there was like a decision about the possibility of even bumping that down to five hundred feet? So I don't know if we need to, what I was.
That's totally up to you guys. That's why I say I just, I, if I highlighted those couple areas that I need some direction from the council. So whatever you want to set as a matter of policy, I just, I put those in there because that's what other municipalities have done. And then if you guys want to change them, happy to do that.
Should, so, can you speak to the back and forth with planning commission, how they're doing the zoning stuff and?
Well, so it's, well, I guess there's a couple things. One is in terms of actually enacting the ordinance, they're working on, on their own, on the zoning portion of it. So that's separate from, from us. We're doing the, what we would refer to as the police power ordinance. That basically enables us to regulate these facilities based on health, safety, and welfare. When each of these facilities actually applies for a license, that application wants everything, excuse me, has been submitted to the clerk and has cleared what I'll refer to as investigation by the public safety department, by my office, by the planning department, by the finance department, and the finance department is to make sure that they're not in default of the city, make sure that they have the, the assets that they need. The clerk refers that to the planning commission, planning commission makes their recommendation to the council, and then at that point it comes to the council for them to do their evaluation of the thirteen factors that are outlined in the ordinance to determine, are we going to in fact issue a license based upon these factors and the planning commission's recommendation? Or are we on the, on the flip side, going to deny that license for reasons X, Y, and Z? And that's basically the, the extent of the involvement of the planning commission for these applications and license. So as far, I mean, as far as the, the big things from council tonight that I, that I need to know is how many, how many of each facilities, distances from schools, and whether or not you want to include parks and places of religious worship, because I know that had been a point of discussion in a previous meeting.
Councilman.
I'm sorry, I was gonna add one more thing. So my tentative timeline for this is to hopefully, assuming we get all that information tonight, is to bring to you an ordinance for a vote at the second meeting this month. And if all goes well, then we will have that for a second reading. The first meeting in January, it would become effective thirty days after that, so essentially licenses could be issued after February first.
Councilman French.
Thank you. The concern, I have a couple of things. A thousand feet from a school, a church, and a park likely means, given the number of churches and parks.
Yes.
There's not a single.
Yeah.
Spot in the city of Albion with the exception, maybe.
Maybe.
Of the back corner of the industrial park for this to take place.
And, and maybe the council misunderstands what I'm saying. So what now, what's in there now is a thousand feet from schools. What I meant was, if you want to include a distance, then it has to be from parks or places of religious worship, that can be added. I didn't mean that you needed a thousand feet for those as well. I just, I know there's been some discussion about that, so I didn't know whether or not you want to include a distance regulation.
Councilmember Brown and Councilman French.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a procedural question. Because this item is on our agenda as a discussion item.
Right.
So I don't know how we could take action to give you specific, to give you what you're asking.
Right, you just need to discuss, and you're not voting on anything. What, I just need to get a sense of the room so that I can add it to the ordinance. And so when it comes back later this month, I have those general idea of what the council wants in the ordinance and.
We, we can.
I just need a consensus to, to put the draft together.
I get what you're saying. Go ahead, Councilman French.
Thank you. I, I think we're not taking a vote on each of these. I think what we're doing is sort of straw polling. The idea of not taking action because we're not approving this, right? We're creating a document.
Right.
And creating a document and ordinance, seeking feedback from members of council. And then when the document is written and we take approval, then that's when we approve it. So that's, so to continue, the other question I had, your first question goes back to how many of these permits you want, the city wants to approve, right? So grower facilities, various classes and the thing. So my, my question then is, is that we can set the number to be any number we want, but that does not guarantee that we will get that number of growers, processors, transporters, safety compliance people, correct?
Correct.
So could we take the approach that, at least from a grower point of view, and maybe I need more information, I mean, how many plants are needed to support a processor facility, a transport facility, and a safety compliance facility? So that all of those things can be self-contained within the city of Albion?
I, I think it depends on, there, there are certain tiers of licenses.
Right, no, I understand that, but, but I'm just thinking in terms of plants, right? So as a chemist, I need to know how many grams of marijuana I'm going to need in order to process, to make the products I want to make. Likewise, we're going to need so many pounds of marijuana bulk in order for them to be transported to dispensaries or what have you. So I'm just trying to get a handle on how much is enough.
Well, so, so, so that we can kind of expedite this, I think let's, let's. Thank you. Let's, let's kind of start maybe with the easy thing. And so I think the easiest thing is to decide probably, do we want to include places of worship and what was the other one?
Parks.
And parks in that list. So I think that's something, Councilmember Brown.
With all due respect, any type of law vote or one around.
Is this a point of order? Is it a point of order?
No, I'm saying we wouldn't be in violation of open meetings act.
Okay.
Any type of action.
Okay.
Of deciding.
Okay.
Anything outside of an official vote.
Okay.
The best way I would think to do it is, after everybody had a discussion, would be best to say, okay, common man, why don't you take those notes and come back to us, because we can't take a straw poll.
Well, that's, I mean, that's where I'm kind of asking.
Here, here's, here's what we'll do. Here, here's what we'll do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna procedurally move this really quick. You know, I usually, that's one of the things we're going to discuss about, the discussion action items, because it's on the agenda. We can, we can do. I'm gonna ask for a motion to amend the agenda so we can just have quick votes on each of those really quickly. And we'll do it that way. So is there, is there a motion to amend the agenda to allow votes on this item?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote please for amending agenda.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
This is to amend the agenda.
Just to amend the.
Yeah.
So that we can, yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Amer Brown?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, let's kind of start with the houses of worship and the parks.
Well, can I actually ask you, before the one immediately preceding that is a thousand feet for schools?
Oh, okay.
Is there?
Okay, that's fine. I, I, I think it should be, I know in planning commission, there was discussion about dropping it to five hundred, just because, you know, right on the edge of, sort of the edge of industrial park is McIntosh. Then you have, there's an Orthodox church right there on State Street in Austin. And those are closest to the industrial park.
We're talking about schools first.
And I think schools are already included, right?
We're talking about schools.
Schools, churches.
Yeah, two schools.
Okay.
And I don't think either one of them is going to be.
Okay, so the other question I have then is, just one second. The other question, can we, do they all have to be uniform?
No. What do you mean? Like having, for example, a thousand feet for schools and say five hundred for churches? No, you make them wherever you want.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember French, Councilmember Brown.
So I, I would suggest that we.
Just, just one second.
We approve.
Out, out of respect for deliberations, can we just please keep the voices down? Thank you. Councilman French.
Thank you. I, I would say that, I would support us voting on a thousand feet for schools first. That's easy, I think.
Okay.
And then, and then we can address and have a conversation about the other two things.
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we actually table this to a, a later meeting because Attorney Harkness did an awesome job in outlining the specific information that he needs, but we need time to think about and come back together, discuss, and make a decision. So I'm moving to table.
Support.
Is this indefinitely to a particular date or just?
To a next meeting or if we need a special meeting, just add a later date.
Okay. Uh, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion for that?
I agree with that because I like time to see how far, where, where the churches are and, and schools and things, and how far the five hundred would be from, five hundred to a thousand would be from it.
Okay.
Because I don't think it should be anywhere near it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Roll call vote please. This is, this is a motion to, to table this until we have a, another session.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Barnes?
Yeah.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, we'll move on to item D, the discussion, the list of replaced city street signs. I think this came from Councilmember Spicer, the street sign.
Well, oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I previously asked for city manager, or some, one of her staff, some of her staff to, if you could provide a list of the street signs in Albion that have been, the worn and torn ones that have been replaced and installed, and I, I have it on hand, the list of the streets that have had signs replaced, and I do appreciate that. I was just wondering, uh, that they, someone, they indicated, Harry indicated that they were hoping to install more by the end of the year, and I was just wondering if we have a list of those that plan to be installed, as well as, if you could speak, could you ask them to speak to this list? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Jim Wunertson, Director of Public Services, to answer your question, Councilperson Spicer, we do not have a current list. I can tell you that, basically what happens is, once we derive at a list, we will send that list to have those signs made, which obviously takes time, we get them back. As everybody knows, we're understaffed and have been, so we're getting them put up as quickly as we possibly can. Obviously, budget restrictive, so we're doing the best we can with it. We'll keep moving forward, hoping to get more up this year, and we'll concentrate on some more again next year.
One, one question. Okay. Do you have a?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Jim, thank you for that, and I understand understaffed, overworked, certainly appreciate your efforts and that of the city staff. I just want to know, how are residents who have, or would like to request a sign replacement for worn, torn signs, they, to the contact, Hugh, how are we going to handle that procedure?
It would be helpful if the residents out there, if they see a sign that's on their street, they can give us a location and address, cross street, what have you, they can email that to me, or Harry at the Street Department, or stop in at City Hall, drop a note off, give a call, leave a message, or add it to the list and see what we can do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
The one question I have, so if, if there's a street sign that's installed, and it's, let's say, two signs on it, what, what's the price for that usually, just for?
I'm sorry?
For the, for the stake or that's in there, and then the two signs, what?
The pole and the signs itself?
Yeah, just the total price.
Cost?
Yeah.
I don't really, I can't answer that at this point, I could get back with you on it.
Okay.
I know Harry normally deals with all that. We try to keep it within the budget, as I stated earlier, so.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item E, Request Approval Resolution 2017-49. It's a resolution to approve the ninety-ten health insurance cost sharing opt-out.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Mayor and council, back in 2011, there was a public act instituted by the state of Michigan that essentially requires that local municipalities comply with their requirement that the cost of healthcare services should not exceed eighty percent from the public tax dollars and a twenty percent from the employee. But they did allow you to opt out of that requirement, and since ours is ninety percent by the city and ten percent by the employees, this is our, our resolution to opt out of that requirement.
Is there any discussion? Yeah, so, since that was passed, the city's done that every, every year for the employee, so, seeing no further discussion, I ask for roll call vote please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. F, email. I, I put this on the agenda, there's kind of two subsections we initially had, we had scheduled a work session for the A part, and what I had in mind, really can just be announced tonight, I know Chief Kip is here, the city, for a very long time, has used forwarding emails for council. So, that's basically our precinct, or in my case, the mayor, and it's forwarded to whatever emails that we, we use, and so that creates issues potentially for FOIA, and so I know what, what has happened is, there are emails that have been set up that are, I guess tied to our, our names, that are actually working emails, and so what, what I'm saying right now is, we're gonna have to set up a time, and ask the council member to set up a time, we either, we either can do that collectively, or we can kind of schedule time with the chief to learn how to gain access to that, and then if you need help to, you know, install that on your, your cell phone, or those kinds of things. So, so really, that, that agenda item was that simple. I was gonna spend, I was gonna spend the study session just doing that, so if, if we want to have a collective time to do that, where we, Chief Kip can take us through that, we can do that, or we can just schedule individual sessions, and he can walk us through that, so I wanted to bring that to council's attention. The, the FOIA thing, I also requested that, I had a conversation with, and the manager also put some documentation in the, helpful documentation in the packet, but this, this for me, the reason why I put this on the agenda, had a conversation with Attorney Harkness about a couple of questions I had about FOIA and how, how, how we can either remain in compliance or begin to be in compliance, because I know one of the things that, question that I has is that if, for example, if a city employee is on a mailing list, and let's say from the chamber, and they receive like a, just a, you know, an automatic email, and that's, and that comes on to the city's servers, is that, is that then a public record, and then what requirements we have to maintain those emails? You know, so that was a concern. I know that sometimes, you know, I see like blind carbon copying being used, and so I had some concerns about that and what that does for the ability for residents to search for certain, I guess recipients of emails. So, that was just basically, this is bringing it to the council's attention. That might be a work session, or maybe we can do that with our MML training, but I wanted to make sure that, like I said, with, with item A, that we set up a time with Chief, Chief Kip to familiarize ourselves with the new emails, and then B, that we kind of anticipate, I know it's the end of the year, but having some discussions about FOIA compliance and making sure that, you know, working with IT right, that we, we're keeping everything as long as we should be keeping it and complying with FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. Is there any other questions? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to G, Request Approval Resolution Number 2017-50, a resolution to increase the city manager's salary.
So moved.
Okay, moved and supported, who's the supporter?
Support.
Moved.
Okay. And second?
Support.
Okay. Uh, discussion. Councilman Burns.
In, uh, working in municipal government, municipal fundings are dispersed and categorized units. Each funding unit stands alone. Unions are collective bargaining units. Unions made a bid and accepted a bid of finances for their satisfaction. Management also had a voice in their financial gain to a level where they were happy and accepted their gain. That cannot be a valid point of reasoning for Dr. Mitchell's ability to negotiate a business contract, and best practice is to renegotiate prior to the end of the contract if the person is valued. City manager has requested a twelve thousand dollar increase. The current contract is 2016, 2018. Although, some members of this sitting council have argued against making any changes in the current contract, however, they set a precedent, they have just acted to change the amount and length of the contract for the city attorney, and that was from 2015 to 2024. On November sixth, 2017, this sitting council approved a new agreement for the city attorney that increased the dollar amount and changed the term of the agreement to 2018 to 2027. I did this research after the last meeting where the mayor and council members had certain comments. Took the notes, and I went and researched those statements. The city manager's contract specifically states in section six point B that in addition, the city may increase the salary and benefits of the city manager in such amounts, and to such an extent as the city may determine is appropriate on the basis of an annual review of the city manager. I would like to look at some comparable salaries for city managers of similar sized cities is available through the Michigan Municipal League. Let's look at Marshall, seven thousand people, city manager makes one hundred fifteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, generates six point four million. Grand Ledge, seven thousand seven hundred, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, three point three million revenue. Three Rivers, seven thousand eight hundred population, one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, with a four point seven million. Greenville has eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one people, city manager makes one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars at a five point three mil. Menominee, eight thousand five hundred and ninety-nine people, makes one hundred and eight thousand with a five point nine. Albion, having more population than any of those cities, eight thousand six hundred and sixteen, city manager makes ninety-six thousand dollars with a revenue of four point zero million. The Michigan Municipal League has noted that it is challenging keeping experienced city managers in the state of Michigan. Competition for those with high levels of training, education, and experience is very competitive. Few city managers in Calhoun County or the state of Michigan have the level of education and government experience as Albion's city manager, Dr. Mitchell. The city manager has demonstrated her added value by bringing in more than one point five million dollars in grant funding for the city of Albion. Nine hundred thousand wastewater treatment plant, five hundred thousand water tower, one hundred and thirty thousand plus for Holland Park, numerous other grants. The request for additional twelve thousand is fair, reasonable, and warranted. If the city manager becomes totally disabled, no, I'm not gonna even do that, I'm gonna go down to salary, six, section six, salary. Following the city manager's performance, annual performance evaluation, should the city manager receive an overall evaluation of at least three point seven, she's in four plus, I'm gonna go four eight plus, rather, the city manager shall be entitled to a performance incentive payment of two thousand dollars. Section B, I'm sorry, section six, salary, letter B. In addition, this is the contract, in addition, the city may increase the salary and benefits of the city manager in such amounts, and to such an extent as the city may determine is appropriate on the basis of an annual review of the city manager. In closing, again, Marshall, city manager makes one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars. Grand Ledge, one hundred two thousand four hundred and ninety. Three Rivers, hundred seven thousand two fifty-two. Greenville, Menominee, the only one that makes more is Coldwater, but they have a population that's much higher than Albion. Albion has a higher population than all of the other cities, and they all make more than our city manager. Respectfully, thank you.
Councilman French?
Yep. Thank you. Um, so, I helped write this resolution, and, and in deference to conversations we heard from the public this evening, I think that the reason that I didn't put a dollar amount was because at our last council meeting, we rejected a dollar amount that I suggested, and so I just asked that we be committed to our city manager and wish to, to extend her contract and to increase her salary as commensurate with her experience and her value to this community. And so, I'm not, I, I think that the, that those negotiations should probably happen in closed session, I think that that's typically the way contracts are done, and so I'm just asking that we make this commitment to our city manager that we will, we recognize, given the data provided, that, that we are underpaying our city manager, given the comparison group that has been presented, so I, I support this, this resolution, so.
So, oh, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I speak for council when I say we all appreciate and we all recognize the work of Dr. Mitchell. I just, I have to respond to the, the communities listed, Marshall, Grand Ledge, Three Rivers, Greenville, they're wealthier than Albion, they, we, we don't have the money that they have. Um, so, I know last time, this was brought before council, the proposed salary increase was thirteen and a half percent. Um, I can speak for myself, I, I voted against that. I feel that we just approved administration getting a four percent increase and a thirteen and a half percent for the city manager. To me, I, I, there was no way in my mind I could, I, I could approve that number. As far as the resolution before us tonight, it doesn't, it doesn't have specifics in it, so I, I'm concerned about voting on a resolution with no specifics, because we could get in a closed session and say, well, we may not want to do this, or we may want to do A and not B. So, in my opinion, voting on this resolution without having a discussion and coming up with solid numbers isn't a wise move.
Come on, Mayor.
And, and that's my opinion on it. Thank you, Mayor.
So, go ahead.
Just as a point of clarification for the council, in terms of a, a Open Meetings Act issue, we can't do a straight contract negotiation that's not union in a closed session. In the past, the way that that's come about is during a performance evaluation, an employee such as myself or the manager has said, as part of that evaluation, by the way, I'd like to see X amount increase in my contract, or, or something like that in the context of a performance evaluation, which I think is fine, but we can't go into a closed session just to negotiate a contract, that would have to happen in some form of open session, whether it's a regular council meeting or a study session or something.
And, and I, I would agree, because when we, when we first hired Dr. Mitchell, the Labor Committee was the Mayor Domingo, Councilmember French, and I guess that was Councilmember Brown then, and that was in the mayor's office when we did that, so I know there were a number of community people who were in the audience who were there when we did that. Relative, just to kind of correct the comment about the city attorney's agreement with the city, that's a retainer, so that can be, I mean, there's a period to it, but there's, that's a little different than, slightly different, because the, the terms of it.
Well, there's no definite term, but it can extend beyond ten years under the statute of laws.
Okay, okay. So, it's, the, the nature of that's a little different. What, what I would like to see, and I, I talked to Councilmember French earlier about this, but to me, it's putting the cart before the horse. I think we should have a negotiation and then approve something, because, and, and when I was thinking, I was reading, I was looking back over this, I was thinking, a couple of weeks ago, the council, I want to say unanimously approved, I want to say at the meeting where it was rescinded, we said, okay, we're going to do these things, and so in a way, I think that's still an effect. So, so this. So, this doesn't really... It's not specific enough to, you know, really do something. And then, to me, it's putting the cart before the horse in terms of the negotiations, because, you know, we could say, and I agree with Councilmember Brown, we could say, "Well, we won't extend the contract, but we'll leave the salary increase into the next review." But what we've committed to do if we approve this tonight is doing a certain, taking a certain action before we had a chance to negotiate, so. Councilmember French.
So, um, thank you for that. So, I would consider make a friendly amendment to this resolution and remove the two words "and duration" from that resolution. I think that, again, given her performance evaluation and given her experience and given everyone on this council's acknowledgement of the good that she has done and brought to our community, that us saying we resolved to increase her salary and the fact that she could then call a meeting in which she makes a request about a specific amount of that salary, this just starts the process. It's a public affirmation of our city manager's performance. It's connected to her performance review and that we, as a council, support our city manager to the point that we wish to publicly say we want to increase her salary. I don't see that as a cart before the horse at all, because it doesn't hold us to a quantity of that increase. It is simply an acknowledgement and statement of support that we, as a council, are committed to retaining our city manager and to compensate her appropriately.
So, I have one... I'm sorry, just one question. I'm sorry. One question from the attorney. If we approve this and we decide we don't do that, are we liable legally for anything for not following the vote that we took?
Well, I think there's two things to consider. I recall, the council did a resolution in October where the council committed to enter into negotiations with the manager at a later date. You know, I would say this. The way that this is worded, I mean, to add an addendum to her contract that increases her salary, I mean, all that would be committing the council to is an increase, whether it's an increase, a substantial increase or a nominal increase, all it does is commit you to an increase. So, you know, I mean, I think legally, could that be a dollar? Yes. Would I suggest that the council do that? No, because that would be a real slight to the manager, but hypothetically, that's an increase. So, it doesn't tie you to a specific amount. It would commit you to an increase, though.
That's, and that was my question. Councilmember Spicer and Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Given the friendly amendment by Councilwoman French, with regard to the resolution, I think that that... I think it's something that if we, if it was amended, I could support. And I don't... I think everyone here agrees that Dr. Mitchell does an outstanding, fabulous, awesome job. And we, if additional compensation is what she is requesting and would like, and if that shows her that we support her and we want her to stay, I would consider that. I was one who voted on the last resolution with regard to the 12, 13 percent increase. I could not support that. However, I do support Dr. Mitchell and I do support an increase. I would just like us to have a meeting of the mind so that we could discuss it and get it done and move on. Because frankly, I'm tired of seeing this on every agenda for the last two and three months. So, we should, let's do what we need to do so that we can move on, get this taken care of. We all agree she deserves something, so let's get busy doing what we need to do. There are bigger fish to fry, greater matters to be addressed, and let's move on and do the work that we were elected to do.
Councilmember Spicer stole my thunder. I basically was going to say, yes, I'll concede.
So, there's been a motion to amend that by the maker. Is there a second to remove "and duration"?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Brown.
I do have a question for us to consider. We need to, we need to... I don't want this to get approved and it just be sitting out here for months. I want us to act on this so we can go.
Yes.
Okay?
I can commit to calling a special meeting. Councilmember French.
I, thank you. I am equally committed to acting quickly.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, this is the vote on the removal of "and duration" from the resolution language. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, so we are now back to the main motion to approve the resolution with those two words removed. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Other than, can we set a date before we leave here? Tonight?
Future agenda items.
We'll do that, future agenda items.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Okay. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First and foremost, I just want to say that we had a wonderful celebration this past Friday, the Albion-a-Glow and Community Open House. And I want to thank in particular the new president of the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce, Eric Worley, and Assistant City Manager, Stacy Levin, who did an exceptional job in coordinating that event. And I want to thank you all for allowing the employees to take the half-day off on December 15th so that we can have our holiday celebration. And we welcome your participation and donations, food or financial support. And our attorney, Colin Harkness, has already agreed again to contribute to that effort. So, I want to thank Colin for his support of our employees in that celebration. So, City Hall will be closed on Friday, December 15th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. so that the employees will have an opportunity to share and celebrate. Also, the Economic Development Corporation building on North Superior, 309 North Superior, which is actually under the ownership of the Albion Building Authority, has placed that building on the market. And so, we're expecting hopefully to get some responses to the RFP for realtor for that property. And Mayor and council, I need to get responses from you relative to your availability for the session with Attorney Scott Smith. I've heard from two of you, but I need to hear from the rest of you so we can confirm a date that works with everyone's schedule. And that concludes my report.
Future agenda items. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. The medical marijuana ordinance, I'd like for us to schedule a time so we can discuss and act on that and get that information to Attorney Harkness. Also, the sidewalks that Dr. Mitchell mentioned that council needs to figure out how we're going to allocate this money.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. Just, the city council rules.
That's what I was going to say.
So, I think Councilwoman Brown and Mayor Brown, you both have a copy of the latest and greatest.
Yep.
If we can arrange to have a look at that, the three of us, even if it's by email, so that we can bring it to the agenda for approval at the next meeting, so we can start January...
I agree.
...with a new set of council rules.
I agree.
So, if you could just give me some feedback and then we'll just bring it in its current draft and we can tweak it as we need to in council if that's amenable to both of you.
Okay. Councilmember Brown, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I personally would rather meet in person, the three of us, so we can face to face. So, we can coordinate that.
Right after meeting, we can find a time? That'd be great. Thank you.
Exactly. Are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Everyone is here. Public comments. Is Mr. Dunklen here? Oh, well.
Mike Bearman, 1101 629 Mile Road. In the three and a half years I've been coming to these meetings, I've never raised my voice before. I want to apologize. It was unprofessional of me and I should never have done it. So, I want to apologize to the council and to Sonya for doing so. Thank you.
I'll do afterwards, after the face-peak.
Karen Yankee, 104 Irwin Avenue. I would like to address the 2018 citywide leaf pickup. If it would be possible for citizens of Albion, possibly a council member to form a committee to address this issue, and perhaps the proposed profit from the medical marijuana leaves could be used to sustain this.
I'm going to wait, because she had a count. I'm waiting until they have counts.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Nicholson at 815 Huntington Boulevard. It was mentioned that there were two schools in Albion. I just want to remind people that we have Kroll as well as the Harrington and Marshall Opportunity School where we have Head Start and the Great Start Readiness Program. There's also the Little Lambs Preschool and then Albion College. So, there would be five schools to think about.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Connor, 811 East Michigan Street Avenue, sorry. I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Leadership Council that is chaired by Harry Bonner, Ellen Henson, and Nidia Wolf. By that group, I've been asked to bring one important issue to you tonight. There has been talk lately about revising the charter of the city of Albion. A study session of the council on September 25th dealt specifically with that question. Our Community Leadership Council, after study on our own, suggests a single, reasonable, and seasoned path forward. It should be noted that amendment and revision are two very distinct paths. Amendments deal with a single issue. Revision means opening up the entire charter for a three-year period with an elected paid commission and a consulting attorney at a cost of $60,000, potentially to $100,000. As has been pointed out numerous times, our charter is the foundation of our city government and it legitimizes our mayor, council, city manager government with its specified powers and responsibilities. On October 24th, this council reaffirmed faith in Albion's city government and Albion's existing charter. We do not need to revise our entire charter. We have already affirmed its core. What should we do? We believe there are three things that we can do without great expense and in the best interest of Albion. First, because the charter was last codified or updated in August of 2011, we can bring it and subsequent ordinances and resolutions, amendments, up to date by a new codification. That's a procedural act. Two, we can review the charter for those items that are obsolete and antiquated, and we can consider where amendments might need to be made. And third, using resolutions and general elections, we can amend the charter. We can be proactive, not reactive. We can use the mechanisms we have in place. We can expend our resources and energies for downtown development, job creation, supporting our children and our youth. And we can stroll the streets, walk the beat, buy locally, and be positive. And we can amend the charter if and where there is a need. We do not need to revise the charter. We trust that you will agree. I brought with me some slips of paper to assist Albion citizens in our work. They give the location of an electronic copy of the charter, an email address for forwarding suggestions, and Harry Bonner's phone number for further information or discussion. I thank you very much.
I just don't want us to respond when they were talking.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager Mitchell, residents of the city of Albion, and those viewing at home, good evening. My name is Gary Tompkins and I'm your county commissioner. Just want to start out this evening, I haven't had the opportunity to officially congratulate you on the city of Albion receiving the federal COPS grant through the Department of Justice. Interesting enough, Albion was just one of 79 nationally in the departments and only one of five in the state of Michigan to actually receive the COPS federal grant from the Department of Justice. It is a well-deserved honor, certainly, for getting that grant, and I can tell you that the folks at the Department of Justice were certainly tired of hearing my voice, as I called them numerous times. So, again, it was congratulations and it was well-deserved. At a recent public hearing, the county board of commissioners had our public hearing regarding the 2018 county budget, and I just wanted to take a moment to put some of the highlights up to you. We're going to, first of all, we're going to maintain the operating tax levy at 5.377.9 mils, which has been unchanged since 2007, so it's 11 years without a change. Our general fund budget recommendation reflects a $44.5 million in expenditures, which is about a 6.81 percent increase from 2017. The top two expenditures being personnel services and fringe benefits, which accounts for 55 percent of our total expenditures. Also, a $44.7 million in revenue budget, which is up 7.23 percent from 2017, with the top two revenues being taxes and special assessments and charges for services, which account for 71 percent of our total revenue. Additionally, there was also the recommendation put forth, included a $32 million budget expenditure for the road department as well. And the commissioners will be taking it up at our December 7th meeting this Thursday to either officially approve or deny the budget moving forward for 2018. A more detailed breakdown of the budget will be available in my December edition of my newsletter that will be coming out in December. And with that being said, as I always state, my monthly newsletter is always available to anyone wishing to sign up for it by email. It's available at the Albion District Library. If you wanted to have physical copies of that, you can get the email address on the bottom of that. And certainly, it's a good resource to know what's going on in and around the 7th district, especially all the activities that are going on in and around Albion as well. So, with that being said, I do want to take the opportunity and state the fact is the Albion-a-Glow downtown was absolutely phenomenal. And I do want to take the opportunity to reiterate what an honor and privilege it was to speak at that tree lighting ceremony. With my father being there and having the opportunity, I do certainly appreciate it, folks. It meant a lot to me, so I do appreciate that. And then finally, I want to take the opportunity to yourself, residents of the city of Albion, those viewing, to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a very happy, prosperous new year, because I look forward to working with each and every one of you for a great 2018 for the city of Albion.
Thank you for the call.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Take care.
My name is Sheila Lyon-Savazga. I live at 1433 East Michigan Avenue. I guess I want to address the research that Councilman Barnes did discussing the pay of our neighboring sort of area city managers that have sort of similar, or actually, in many cases... And so, I encourage you to think... And so I encourage you to think about that, Council and Mayor, as you think about the amount to compensate Dr. Mitchell. So do some more research and, you know, pay her what she's worth and what you can afford. Thank you.
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name's John Dunklin. I live at 1203 Second Street, Albion, Michigan. I'm here to talk about the streets of Albion and a resident guidebook that Albion has not revised since 1997, but they're still using laws on the books. City manager must develop locally ordinance services, relations, and economical development to ensure the highest quality of life in the community. First, Second, Third, Wild, Carson, and Hartwell are out of code. I spoke on this in 2000, from 2000 to 2017, I have spoken on this. I have a petition with 117 names to speak on the gutter streets. And I would like the mayor and the city manager to please speak on this because as of right now, kids are in the middle of the street because the sidewalks are bad or there are no sidewalks. The potholes that's in the street are repeating traffic. You make the taxpayer hold to code, but this council has been out of code for three decades. They will not answer taxpayers. They will not return phone calls. Can I ask again? Why not? I ask again, why not? It's been three months. It's been six years. It's been 17 years. Why are you people here? You're here for we, the people. We, the people, demand answers. You give us none. It's time. It's a new age. You want money. Everybody wants money. Fine. We want answers, not quiet. Speak up. Can anybody speak up about these streets that's out of code? Anybody? He's my councilman. He can't speak?
Yeah, what?
He can't speak for my area? He's my councilman.
But what?
Mr. French gets to speak for his district. Why can't my, my councilman speak?
During, during public comments, we listen to comments and then after, the council members are gonna be able to respond, but we're respecting
Okay.
your time, yeah.
Well, if you're respecting me, can I get some answers? Can I get some answers on this resident book that's out of code? Some of the streets that's out of code? Some of the sidewalks that's out of code? Some of the potholes? How does a handicapped person go off a curb? Can anybody explain this to me? How do a one-legged person go off a curb? Can anybody explain this to me? I guess not. So you're basically saying we, the people, aren't needed. Albion College is, is what it sounds like to me. And I'm putting it out there, because nobody's answering. Nobody. And thank you and have a nice day.
Don't leave, John.
Don't leave.
Well, they want to ask you.
Have a seat.
They want to ask you.
Mr. Arnold.
Wayne Arnold, 906 Hall Street. First of all, I would like, I would like to ask the City Council to just rescind this whole marijuana deal altogether. Because since, since this came up, they, it came, it came to me that they probably gonna have it on the ballot in 2018 anyway. So things is probably gonna change. So first of all, I would like the City Council to just rescind the whole marijuana thing until after the 2018 election, because it's gonna be something, it's gonna be a whole lot different. And what sense does it make to approve all the manufacturing, the processes, and everything else and not have the complete package? So if you don't have the complete package, just take it all away and wait for the state to make the decision. And then in regards to, you know, I don't know how this becomes, you know, just taking Mr. Barnes', Mr. Barnes' figures here. You know what? It seems pretty simple to me. Let's meet, let's get intermediate here. Let's, if I was on the board, I would, I would definitely agree to give him, to make Ms. Mitchell somewhere around 100,000 or 101,000, somewhere in there. We don't have to make it really complicated. Of course, we, we like to show our appreciation, but, you know, let's, let's, let's keep it, you know, within reason here. And then as far as, let me make a suggestion for that extra money we got that the senior citizens paid for these sidewalks. Why don't you give it back to the senior citizens in a way that they could use it to maybe reduce their property taxes? Since we are the ones that paid the property taxes and we overpaid, give it back to some senior citizens in a way that would benefit seniors. I never hear anybody talking anything about helping the senior citizens, you know? So if we got this extra money, let's put it toward our property taxes and give Ms. Mitchell her raise around 101,000 and let's keep it moving. And by the way, before I get done, you know what? Those people that's behind the scenes, you know, going back to TV and the news reports and stuff, why don't you just cut it out? You know, this woman ain't doing nothing. She represents her constituents. She represents the city. I applaud her for challenging people. If I was there, I'd definitely be challenging. So you know, those people, just, just cut it out and leave her alone, okay? Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening? Okay, so I'm going to, oh.
Chad Bosie.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah. You didn't tell me what the point of order was. Go ahead.
Chad Bosie, 1021 Burr Oak Street. I think that, that one of the things that was addressed tonight, the city email addresses and FOIA compliance. This has been an issue for a while and our city manager has been persecuted for what you guys had in your arsenal of tools as a council in her evaluation. That was totally unfair when you guys did, in fact, since February, have municipal email addresses or somewhere in that time when the new email system came in. It's, it's a shame that FOIA compliance has been, there's been an avoidance of it. Also, another thing I wanted to echo off of was Mr. Dunklin's statement here that he speaks upon deaf ears. I see so much time when people from the public are speaking that council members are fidgeting with their documents or not really paying attention to the public. They were, they were basically hired by vote to the public and have to be accountable to the public. So one, until this council came upon Albion, the citizens of Albion were able to get immediate response from the council. And they were able to get answers from, like Mr. Dunklin said, his council member. Or, and everybody had a chance to talk at that point. But the citizens' voices have been muzzled at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further public comment this evening? Dr. French. Andy, did you, did you have any comment? Did you have anything that you wanted to say? Because I know there were two, there were two. Okay. Yeah, I just want to, at the end of public comment, I want to make sure that I clarify. This is just for a procedural thing. We had a consultation training with the MML that led to us reducing the speaker time from four minutes to three because what the professional was saying is that after three minutes, you start to kind of repeat yourself. So that moves the meeting forward in a more efficient manner. And the other component of that was making sure that council respected the chance the residents had or the public had to talk. And so in the past, when we didn't observe that, but now we're trying to do that. And if there's something procedural, we'll mention it after the public has talked, but we don't want to get into a debate during public comment, so. Councilmember Reed.
I'd like to see that put on the agendas at the bottom or somewhere. Because I used to, at one time when I was not on the council, come down and if I had questions about things, they did me just like we do here. They sit and they just nodded their head, just nice, and then gave me no answer at all. And I would go and sit down wondering, why didn't they answer me? And if they don't know the process of why you're not answering, then they should be told the process. If it's printed on the agenda that they pick up here, then they will see that the council will not be answering. If they want to wait until afterwards and talk to their individual person or whatever, fine. But it really, it, it, it does upset you to spend your time to come down here and everybody just sit and look at you like you shouldn't have said nothing.
I understand. Thank you. And that's something we can put on. Councilmember Barnes.
I have two points. This council has no written rule addressing the public speakers in farce communication. Normally, on any board, we usually discuss it prior to the meeting. If we think there's gonna be a combative at the mic, just listen. Let them take their statements and be quiet to keep from having combat. Now, concerning Mr. Dunklin, he comes by my house at least two or three times a week. He shows me videos. He shows me the old procedures that haven't been changed. I'm abreast of all of that. I told him I wouldn't speak until I had an opportunity. Mr. Dunklin is 90% correct in the items that he has shown. I've gone down and watched him clean the grass out of the street. I've seen the pothole over in front of Mike's house. The sidewalk is at least nine inches up out of the ground. The potholes are there. We have this problem across the city. I've explained to citizens, as I did tonight, municipal government and funding comes from categorized sections. I can't take street money and go to the nursery. Downtown Superior is a state highway owned by the state. And it was mandated that we have the matching funds for them to fix that. Therefore, Precinct One, First, Second, Third, Broadway, Carson, Wild had to be put on hold. I stated that. However, Mr. Dunklin is very in-depth. He goes through the rules. He goes back years. He calls down here. He comes down here. And yes, some of it has been contentious. But the bottom line is, some of the services that he's expecting, we just haven't had the manpower or the money to do. And we're studied trying to do it. I've networked with Cheryl on that. I get back with Mr. Dunklin. Mrs. Reed has had conversations with Johnny. But he's correct. We just don't have the money to get it done in a timely fashion. And when we do decide on streets, we have to vote. And these other precincts want theirs done too. Johnny come by to my house all the time. I'm married and I'm not having it no more. Thank you.
Oh, I had one more comment. So I appreciate, I saw there was a front of unity on the charter question. I think that, you know, there's more than one way to skin a cat. I think that one of the things that, just, I guess, to point out the, I guess, technical aspect of that is, there was mention of the codification of the ordinances. And you're correct, that was done fairly early in my first, yeah, first term on council. And one of the things that, where the charter comes into play there is the council, right now, could pass a resolution and say that every, with, we won't go beyond a five-year period where the code is not codified, right? So every five years, if it reaches that point, we're required to do that. Another council could come around and pass a resolution to undo that. And so there are some things that are helpful to be in the charter because they are binding on future council. And so those are the kinds of things. I spoke with Mr. Bonner a couple of days ago. You know, Albion has gone from a commission form to a form that allowed a manager until 1998, when it was actually ratified by voters as a permanent part of the charter. But one of the things that's in the charter that's really helpful is the ability to set up citizen advisory committees. And that's one of the conversations I'd even have with Mr. Face. He's not here this evening, is to look at that. Because even with amendments, you know, it's pretty, pretty technical exercise. So I think that I'll be reaching out to some of that group to see what we can do because, like I mentioned before in public, the City of Albion does not have a code of ethics in the charter. There are other things that are missing there that would be helpful. And, you know, I look forward to working with residents who are trying to move the city forward in a positive way, in whichever way, so. With that.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And once all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you.